...of three-phase power and telecommunications utilities within a proposed 25-foot-wide private utility easement traversing portions of three parcels to the south of the applicant's lands. And that's it.
I'm going to make life easy for Mark on one point. In my meeting notes, I mentioned what I characterize as a deficiency in the application that had been submitted. That has been addressed by Mark. Mark has secured from the other three property owners authorization to represent them in this particular matter. And secondly, we'll be getting together with Gretchen to just update the paperwork that's been submitted to me to identify basically four parties as co-applicants in this matter, being Solomon, who's listed on the original applications, as well as the other three property owners. So all of that has been worked through.
There's actually only two other.
Are there only two other?
Two other.
Okay. It's Annie and Duffy.
No.
No, it was the third.
No, because so this application was made by the Solomon Associates, the Marion Group property. And the purpose of the application is to provide essentially three-phase power to the structure, to the residence being reconstructed right now. It's underground, it's utility. So it's three-phase power and also telecommunications that are going to go to the property. And so, and Leighton Allenby is here with me tonight. He probably has more history about that if you want to bring us some of the history of it, and then I can get into the details.
So originally, the two previous contractors put in underground utilities for Mr. Solomon, and they undersized it by half.
Hmm, wow.
And we recently bought a new contract, and we bought a light approach, and we ran the comps and realized that what was in there was probably 600 amps. We need closer to 1100 or 1200 amps on the property. So we looked at one coming downward row and then realized the damage that would cause bringing power lines down river road. And we met with all the adjoining neighbors, and they agreed that they would allow us to go underground through their properties. But we took care of all the destruction blocks and then we got Mark aboard to do the permitting for us.
So where are the other properties you will be going through?
All right, so it's listed as Victorian Franklin Drive LLC, that stuffy property. So that, so it starts here, here's Front Cliff. Sorry. Yeah, here's Front Cliff Drive. So here's the road coming in. Here's Front Cliff right here. All right, so Duffy bought this piece from here. Right, this was, Duffy bought this piece and this piece. That was.
The old hand.
The old company.
So you can see the utility lines that are coming in here that I outlined. Well, there's a utility, I think the power is actually going to be upgraded along those poles, right? No site disturbance. It's just upgrade three-phase power along the poles. And then where I show, there's a pole there. And at that pole, we're going to drop down and go underground with it. And then as you go to the north, this is an old carriage road that was part of the Astor Estate. And we're going to go right along that old carriage road. And then alongside the pond, there's the pond through here, alongside the pond. And then to the west, below, these are the farms, I'll leave these property to the Aston Farms. It'll go to the south side of those farms and then cut across down through here. And underneath this, I have a photograph of it, and also that I'll show you on board there, along the property line, and then down, and then connect into where the existing power sources for Marion Group property, Solomon property.
How deep will this be?
It's just a utility trench, so Central Hudson requires.
12 inches.
Yeah, no, 36 inches.
36 inches.
Yeah, 36 inches, probably a 42-inch trench, and 36 inches of cover.
So the only beneficiary of this will be Solomon?
No. These, the Big Woods will get some benefit from it with regard to telecommunications.
And same with Duffy as far as telecommunications.
Okay.
And another benefit would be on the road going, the carriage road you referred to that goes down through the Lee Woods, it's asphalt. We're going to take the asphalt off and restore to ground instead of asphalt.
You're not going to put the cabling in conduit? You're going to?
No.
It's going to be in conduit?
It'd be in conduit. Just, once again, it would be less disturbance, right? Because if you sand bed it, you know, to sand bed a trench.
Yeah.
It's a lot easier to conduit a trench than to sand, you know, less disturbance.
I thought you had to do both.
So in essence, you could change cabling in time.
Oh, you could, if it happened, right?
Okay, you don't have to dig, in theory, don't have to dig it up. Okay.
And then, you know, power on one side, telecommunications on the other side.
And by putting it on, we don't have to take any trees down. We can go right down this narrow path and stay within the boundary so that there'll be no tree state around this whole place.
It's going to run along the existing right-of-way along there? There's a roadway along there?
A roadway? There's not a.
It's not a right-of-way.
We'll create a right-of-way. So there'll be, obviously, an easement, an easement will be created for this, and.
But it's being put where it is because there's a roadway.
Yeah, so it's minimal disturbance.
Okay, so it's an existing path, roadway, service road or something?
That's correct.
So it's going to go right down the middle of that?
No, actually, it's going to go up on the side.
On the side?
And depending on, you know, with vegetation and where, probably, you know, transfer side, you know, go.
Depending on roots and stuff, you'll go back and forth?
Yeah, we'll go back and forth along that area.
So you're going to stay away from the pond as much as possible?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, so, you know, associated with this application, it would be, I would, you know, discuss it, it was an application for wetland disturbance because of the rollover spacing to.
Be close to it.
Application, special permit application for major excavation. It's greater than 200 yards of excavation for the trench.
Just as a matter of curiosity, what will the width of the trench be?
It's three feet wide.
Three feet wide?
It's huge.
Yeah, it is huge.
There's two, you know, well, you know.
Telecommunications and power, right?
Yeah, so, you know, you either get one foot bucket or a three-foot bucket.
Yeah.
So different conduit for the two different kinds of wire?
Yes, yes.
So he gets the power now along that same area, but it's not enough power?
Correct. It's only single-phase. It's like, didn't see my face come all the way in, right, along through here. There's conduit there now for it, but it's not enough power for the project.
That's the transformer box that's out by the road?
Out by the road, and then that, I'm sure, that conduit goes all the way alongside, it's on the side, it's above the driveway. If it's only two-inch pond, it would be four and three phases.
Why not dig up what's there and use the same path?
There's no three-phase.
There's no three-phase on the road.
It's not cheaper to run the three-phase Central Hudson along through that?
It's going to do, cause more damage to the trees along the whole route.
Okay.
To get it there, and additional poles on River Road.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no power, there's no poles along that section.
Think the other two properties can't benefit from that underground electric, just the telecommunications?
They already have their electric, so.
They have undergrounded the other two properties for Annie's?
Yeah, it's actually, it's right by the pond.
Okay.
Because Lee Woods driveway coming through there, and then, so that's where power comes in from that location. So we actually, you know, we have to cross that with this application.
Do you have an idea why it was underestimated so badly?
Probably done that way.
They didn't hire the white management companies on their project.
I mean, that seems.
They handled the contractors that they hired, they didn't do their homework. And first, they sold them on that he had to have geothermal. They didn't understand that with geothermal, you have to operate the electric.
Almost unfortunate.
So also, so the consideration is also the environmental concerns and the archaeological concerns. So this particular project had, you know, a habitat and study done for it, and typically the species of concern are related to tree plant. And so that's one of the reasons for the choice of this route is to minimize any potential impact. And then also with regard to archaeology, I've already had an archaeologist out to the site doing the Phase 1A, doing the document research, and have, there's planned sections of field investigation. It hasn't taken place yet due to weather conditions, but it's been, the route is entirely flagged, and I prepared a plan for the archaeologist for areas to investigate along the route.
So this is the end of the trench.
The way things are going along there, you're going to need a little power plant on River Road.
One quarter mile?
Yep. We have one down already.
Thirty-five.
There's nothing in it?
Thirty-nine.
Yes, it's 39. From the utility, it dropped down to the location. And it's actually, it'll go to where the three transformers be at, one of the apartment core, on the east side of the building, at Marion Group. That's, that would be the location of the new transformer.
Well, I'm impressed that they were able to get this past all of those neighbors.
They're benefiting. That's nice.
It's good.
Once again, just trying to minimize disturbance and make it, and that's another reason for the power. You know, you can excavate in Barry and not have to keep everything open, and you can do the phases.
You mean, they do it as they move along?
They can, yeah, right.
Right, they have to do it all at once.
You know, excavate and clean up as you go.
That's great.
You can even move the wire. Obviously, some pull boxes, you're going to need to pull that through, but that's the idea of using the conduit.
So Mark's going to tweak the paperwork, and this will be a procedural agenda item for your next meeting on February 20.
Moving right along.
And Larissa has reviewed this application.
Yes. Okay, our next item, or final item if you prefer, is KPH2 management. This is a sketch plan for proposed renovation of Powerhouse, the storage building down there by the railroad tracks, being regulated as an adaptive reuse of an historic building under Section 12562, the 50.317 acre parcel, both of them Historic Preservation Zone of District, Hudson River National Landmarks District, Spades District, statewide significance ametons LWRA, and contiguous to Dutchess County Ag District 20. Is the land, isn't Master Courts in Ag 20 now? I thought that they had got that in the Ag District.
Oh, sure.
I thought, I could well be wrong, but.
No, actually, it was.
Okay.
So it's within, not as opposed to get.
Yes, okay.
Same requirements.
Very good.
So I'll just read the presentation, but this is on the other side of the board, Cynthia Philpott, the Dean of the Austin Philpott, it's really, this is her show tonight. So this is just an extension of the master plan that we thought on this project. And so, you know, in the master plan, we called that, called it, coming back to phase. Here is one of our first favorites that we'd like to present before. So this is your, my, my, your.
What's the big blue graphics that show up next?
Yeah. I don't know if you have had a chance to read the narrative that we took there. So I'll just start with that. If anyone watching happy, I haven't mentioned it. Just to give you a little bit of background, we were here a few times just to introduce the project. The powerhouse was built in 1902 and to generate steam from coal. And I guess still, we're generating power in the area after previous generations. And unfortunately, it was abandoned and decayed for years. And it became so collapsing that we came to you, I guess, a year and a half ago, and asked if we could stabilize it. And that was approved, and we're approved of stabilization. And that was October 2016, and it was completed in April 2017. So we've made a little bit of progress, but we're ready to make some more.
You mean that stabilization was completed?
Yeah.
So all they did was remove the roof and?
And re-pointed all the stone, and we put up a temporary bracing.
Okay.
So, pretty wood load on the Hudson, so something happened.
Can you cap, cap the top wall?
So now, here we are, we're moving forward. Our objective is to, you know, continue to rescue the building and rehabilitate it and retain the historical character. But we also acknowledge that we need to change the use because we have no use for a powerhouse.
Sell it to your neighbor at the roof.
You've got some good reactor equipment down south.
That'll be available in the quarter.
We'll not plant those seeds.
I don't know. How to get into that conversation?
Don't.
And the owners have asked us to design an orangery. And we did come before the board, and part of the master plan was to present those designs to you. And that is still the intention, but there's an interim solution, Phase 2, we'll call it, stabilization is Phase 1, and the orangery is Phase 3. Phase 2 is to accommodate the 40-foot boat that John J. Pashford, previously, owned upon. And so we looked at what would happen. And we looked at what would happen if we could accommodate upon a new width of trunk on a trailer. The boat is shown here on the trailer.
That the grease decides.
I was asking the same thing, but he said it. What we would have to do is we would have to widen the existing door on the north side to match the door on the south side, to try to get this boat in. And the access is only from the north side. We have no vehicular access from the south side. So this was our only solution for accommodating this, this amazing boat that was on the property left in the middle. So we looked at how this north side could possibly look, the larger doors in that area. And we have these 10-foot wide doors at a minimum. And what we're proposing is to make the windows on either side smaller to match the windows on the south side. And it's a little challenging because there's really nothing in there. And that whole building is just kind of gone. So we do have some reference of what the windows look like, and there are some components inside the building. So you can see what they look like, and we're going to match those as best we can. But what we're proposing is to widen this to match the south side.
Which means taking out some stone?
Yes.
Bunch of them?
Yes. Quite a few.
You've already seen it. May I ask, this is viewed as a temporary use until you wish Phase 3 to begin?
The orangery.
And what will determine when it will turn from a boathouse to Phase 3?
Orangery?
That's going for oranges on the foot?
Yes, yes.
That's what I would have called it.
Is there some sort of timing or something will happen, or?
Yes.
What's the plan?
Thanks for asking that. The plan would be to have the boathouse built on the Hudson. It's part of the master plan, but that will take quite some time.
It's a three to five-year permitting. The house is going to stay in every age, so you've got your idea.
My understanding is the piers for the original boathouse are still in the river.
Still there.
They are.
But they're all deteriorated.
Yeah, but they're still there.
Everything would have been rebuilt.
Just call it maintenance.
So is it the thought that this boat would go in here and then just stay there for three to five years?
Yes.
I see.
It's not going to be in and out.
Rather than putting it in a warehouse.
Right.
Where's the boat at?
It's in Newport Beach. We're having a survey done to make sure it's authentic, because it's the right boat. Looks at, and then the extent of the damage. And then from there, if we do purchase that, if we want to purchase it, it will go to EBS and then store it here for three to five years. And if we don't get the permit, then it'll probably just stay indefinite in there.
What's the?
In the summer, they would take it down to a boat launch.
What's the timeline on determining whether it's authentic and desirable to be purchased?
I'll give you a line. I couldn't take my money. But so far, from what I've heard, it looks like it's the real boat. Everything matches.
There's a family that used to live in Reinbeck. He's deceased now, but he was on that boat. In fact, he went on it when it was taken over by the Coast Guard in the Second World War. Okay? And I'm wondering if any of his children might have some photographs or documentation, and I'll get offline with him, give you the name of the family.
Yeah, we have photographs.
Oh, okay.
Everything matches.
Well, she can tell you.
Okay.
To determine that, the word go.
Can I look at that picture again of the existing?
So another thing.
And this is before this new construction. This is how it looked when we first started the project. You're welcome to look through all of those.
Well, I just want to see, so you're changing it from what it was to this new?
We're going to match the south side.
You're going to match the south side.
And because right now, we don't have access with the terrain tracks, and then there's a fence that we have to stay.
But the matching isn't required to widen the doors?
For what?
The matching.
No, isn't required, no.
So that's a design choice as opposed to a structural choice?
So we can utilize this building.
No, no, I'm trying to make the point that.
We did take your advice, Melanie, and we looked at how we could possibly work the windows in. And I can show you some of the issues that we'd like to see. We tried to get the larger doors in with the two windows, and there physically is not enough stone left.
But we talked about that that could be structurally reinforced. Did you find no engineering solution in the world that would allow that to happen, Mark?
Not with stone, no.
No, no, I wasn't saying. May I interrupt? Because I don't understand what the question is or what the issue is.
This is all new to me. What is it that we're trying to?
I raised the issue in terms of the removal of historic material from the building. And as we were talking through it, and Michael and Art can jump in, I understood the need to widen the door. I do understand the need to widen the door. It bothers me personally, as a historic preservation professional, to be removing and thereby destroying the historic materials for a temporary need, although it's a three to five-year temporary need. But nevertheless, it is, you know, we question, can it be stored elsewhere? You know, why not move along with your orangery plant? But that's beside the point. So my question, so there's two things going on, as I understand it. Part of it was a design preference to have the north part of the building, the north opening correspond to the design of the south opening. That was not, however, historically, how it was. There was a reason why the north opening was wider and the south was smaller. So the design part of it doesn't sway me personally. But then we were trying to figure out a way that we could accommodate the wider windows that were part of the historic design, retain those. And so we were talking about how could we structurally support the stone on either sides as you removed some others? And we asked them to investigate that, to see if that was possible. With structural steel or something going behind the stone that would allow the reinforcement of somewhat narrower spaces between the historic windows, or window openings, to be clear at this point, and the broadened widened door. So that was the balance we were trying to achieve between the greatest possible retention of historic material and the desire to accommodate the owner's wishes to move this boat into the building. So we were looking for a little more balance.
But that's also structurally not historic. So it's, and it reads that way, you know, they wouldn't.
But you wouldn't see it.
Now, you wouldn't see such a narrow space between a window and a large.
Is it fair to say this building was a very functional building in that those windows on the north end were there for light? That was an operational mechanical room right inside that first door, wasn't it?
It was electrical room. You had an electrical boat, you made electricity in your batteries.
Probably had an Elko yacht in there.
You had a 90-foot touring boat.
Yeah, they were Elko Company.
Is it possible that this opening may actually be advantageous going down the road as a service opening for other equipment going into the?
Orange tree, yes.
Well, I mean, you're going to have a larger opening possibly anyway.
I don't, the issue that I was relating to was not the width of the opening. I wasn't objecting to the width of the opening.
Right, no, I'm just saying down the road, we're saying it's a temporary, it's not a good temporary. In fact, it probably is because long-term planning will mandate that we have to have a larger opening anyway to make it functional.
And the opening wasn't my concern. My concern was what I consider to be the unnecessary human goal of the fenestration on that elevation.
Is this an attempt to demonstrate?
Is this an attempt to demonstrate how it can be done?
Yes, we have two here. So we tried very hard to fit the physical windows with a larger door. And what we found was that we would only have about one foot of stone of width remaining. And the keystones, as they hit each other, are probably about three and a half or four inches in width. So I think that that is, you know, very, very, very close. We took another look at what would happen if we pushed the door upward, just to try to relieve someone out. You got three and a half inches. And you would lose the center key and the arch. And you might pick up another two or three inches between the keystones, but it's still so.
Is that going to be a structural keystone arch?
Well, not with that, there's nowhere for the load to go. So even if we're just a decorative arch and we reinforced it all with steel and it was just a veneer, it just, it's so tenuous, it doesn't.
Well, that's what I mean by it not being structurally historical. You know, you look at that and say, no, this is somebody that's just making it look as if, because it becomes obvious that it's not structurally the same way as it used to be.
Is it possible that none of this will be needed if you find out the boat you're looking at is not authentic?
It's time.
You're still going to make a larger door down the road.
I think we'd like to have a larger door because it's the only access you have into that building. And if it's orangey, getting, you know, big plants and stuff in there.
Like you could be coming back with that as part of the plan for the orangery at the time you proposed that.
It's ninety-nine percent sure we're going to have a boat. They're spending a lot of money on this.
I didn't even know that the law was prohibiting it from this news to me.
Well, I would certainly want to know. I'd want to see the authentication before I moved ahead.
From a logistics standpoint, how do you get the boat to the site?
We jump back and down to the trail.
Do I go back?
Can you get it? Is the roadway allowing you to?
Yeah.
I don't know.
And this trail, you were trailing.
The windows are the defining features on that elevation. They're the character-defining features.
There is a roadway I wouldn't want to back down.
Isn't that still where the pull-off is for the railroad? Does it go up that far? Because the railroad idles their trains at night on one of those two tracks.
Yeah, it's that way down. It's for the down house, three dang names. Yeah, it's not on the idle path.
Because the people that used to live in that house that you're talking about complained about the trains sitting there and idling half the night. That's why I'm wondering if they're not using that siding or that one track, not a siding, it's not a siding, it's two tracks. They idle one side so that the trains can pass each other.
Yeah, we have a couple of complaints.
They did.
What's the material on that door?
So you're waiting for an authentication?
And there will be a similar door?
And then you will probably. Will they also be getting a cost estimate for the restoration of the boat?
If that's what this whole survey is about, they'll get an estimate.
So it's a two-part, it's an authentication?
They've already given us a three-year budget, and it's simple to work everyone's plan for.
And have they said how long the restoration would take?
Three, four months? Uh-huh.
I don't know, I don't restore boats.
Yeah, so it's not like the boat is actively being used, the use of the charge.
It's in good shape.
Now, structurally, is this demonstrating that structurally this could be done and would support the doors with the steel and whatnot? Is that what this picture is showing?
It could, but it's apparent because the relationship of the lower keystones to the upper keystones, they're not doing anything. Because the loads that are just coming down.
Have to go all the way to corners.
It would just, it would even just fall apart and collapse if it weren't truly historical.
So right now, the beam goes all the way from corner to corner of the building?
Well, the.
And the keystones are all fake? They're not really carrying loads?
The existing keystones. Existing is keystones.
Right, but that's going to be gone. So this is really going to be supported.
There are one in the middle now and a lower one on the side.
So with the narrow windows, you have enough room to do a structural keystone across the top and rebuild it exactly the way, in the same method of building that it should be done.
Except that the windows are not.
The windows are going to be narrower, but that's a visual thing on the windows alone, but you're getting the keystone back as the real.
When I look at that elevation, the character-defining feature on the elevation for me is the windows, not the keystone.
But they're like, they're just like the south side, though.
They're not, they're not this.
The new one, the proposed one is like the south.
But my point is that that alone, to make them the same, is not a sufficient reason to do it.
What is it that makes it so unique, this side?
That they're different.
That they're different than they were, but it doesn't make it.
That they're different from each other.
That they're different from each other is part of the character-defining features of those two elevations. That's what.
You're talking about the north and the south here?
I am.
And the reason was, they had access before to get a vehicle around it and dump stuff and bring a truck inside.
And the building was designed and built according to the needs of what was going to take place there. So there was a practical reason.
You're explaining the needs of the present owner.
Yes, but we're also talking about historic preservation.
We're looking at this very seriously and sensibly, and I think what we presented is.
I agree with that. I mean, it's a very readaptive use of a building that otherwise we do nothing. And shipper already weighed in us on our last, last year when we went through this, they said, you know, it's unfortunate that it can't be built exactly back to its old form and use, but it's obvious that it's not possible to use it for that anymore, so.
But it is possible to use it with the wider windows for an orangery, right? It's only the temporary need of putting this boat.
They decided they still want the orangey, they want wider doors to access it.
But wider doors aren't really needed to access it, right? How wide are the doors now?
For us to decide whether they're three feet or not.
Three feet, maybe four foot.
Well, they're approximately six feet wide, twelve feet high.
But you still can't back a truck into something like that.
No, you can't get a vehicle in a six-foot wide door.
So even if it's an orangery or whatever.
Are you taking a truck into an orangery?
You're going to want a wider door.
These might be even wider than six feet, but they're at least six feet. A standard door is three feet.
Right.
So you can see, you know, the limitations of getting a vehicle into a.
But why would you need to get a vehicle?
If it's going to be used for an orangery.
It's a utility building.
I think that's, let me interrupt you for a second. I think that's something we're all missing. This is an utility building. It is not a mansion.
That's right.
It is a building that was used for, I'll call it, industrial purposes. And we shouldn't lose this. We're not making a pretty house out of this thing or.
Well, they are in the.
It's a utilitarian building.
But it will no longer be one.
That isn't seen by any of us unless you're getting your boat, cruise out on the Hudson?
If the southeast side you see.
That's not relevant to how we treat a historic.
As I recall, when we really discussed, the north side was going to basically be to replicate the south side. And one of the discussions was, would it be possible, rather than replication, to at least where the north windows were, to, it looks like what you've done here is to at least preserve the space, but once again, sort of the space where the windows were, but nonetheless do it with something material near stone of some sort, so you would then have the structural integrity to have the larger doors there. I think that was one of the things that was discussed.
I agree.
Is that what this, that's what this looks like to me?
Well, this is an indication of new stone.
Yes, oh, yes, yes. But once again, following the original plan or the original, you can tell there was a window there. Like as long as you look at buildings, they're bricked up. We have some in Reinbeck, they're bricked up. There was a window there, and this is the size, and this shows that there was a window there of this dimension. That's what that was. But nonetheless, putting the stone in there, which would then be structurally sufficient to help support the doors, I'm guessing?
Well, I think what it comes down to is how the keystone functions here. So if I put the keystone back in, that's where I run into my problem. So if I, if you wanted the stone to look newer, I don't think that would be hard to do. But from a structural and a design standpoint, it would be hard to put the keystones back. We were hoping to reuse them if we can, you know, as part of this arch.
I'm kind of guessing you're going to probably have steel reinforcement behind this anyway because these doors, if they would, are going to be rather heavy. And you're not, you're going to not want them to stand, let the stones alone to support that weight. You're going to want some sort of structural support factor, steel. No matter what you do, you're going to need that, yeah, for these doors.
I think keystones are the most attractive architectural element on the building.
I agree. If they're compromised, I think it compromises the integrity of the structure. Well, it certainly compromises the structural integrity, but it compromises the historical integrity as far as I can see, too. Not that I'm an expert on that.
If this looks more different than that, I mean, we don't really need these windows here. If you want them to look more different, maybe we're trying to try to make them look more the same.
Are they the same size now in this design?
Yeah, it works.
I don't know, I would have to.
Yeah, it's the same facade.
I would have to think that through. I'm not, you know, I'm not, you know, ruling it out. I'd have to think it through. But I am trying to understand now, just to touch on a point made earlier. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of an orangery as proposed, based on what I believe a typical orangery is, is it's really a green space filled with potted trees and other ornamental plants that is intended for passive relaxation and appreciation of nature. Am I going in the right direction?
And there's one more element that I believe, one component is that in the nice weather, the plants come out.
Right.
So that's.
Sure. No, I understand that. But I just wanted to clarify that the movement in and out of an orangery of large-scale potted plants doesn't require a huge truck.
Not a huge truck, but.
But it requires some kind of equipment, but.
Most equipment won't go through a six-foot wide.
I'm just wanting to get all the, a complete understanding of, because we're being asked to make a determination to change a historic building for what is now a temporary use, looking ahead to a proposed use that's been talked about. So I want to have a complete understanding of that proposed future use.
And they have these vehicles that are used in warehouses all the time that are relatively narrow, and they scoot around all over the place and lift things up.
And used in greenhouses.
In all fairness, it depends on what you're lifting. If we're moving out trees, they have to be in some kind of portable container. How big is that container going to be? And do you really want to move a five-foot, ten-wide container through a six-foot door?
Just, I'm just getting.
I think, I think we're talking about not, we're not talking about altering a historic building, we're talking about saving it and making use out of it, first of all. And here we are proposing this as a storage unit, fixing it up, which is, which, the whole building needs pointing and everything anyway, but we're fixing it up, we're going to use it for something, and the orangery, the orangery may not happen either, in all fairness. Maybe this will become a permanent museum for this boat that sits in there and pulled out in the summer and not used until they build it.
That's what makes it difficult. The unknowns.
I don't think it's difficult. I think, I'm looking at a beautiful design.
I agree.
Somebody who's waiting to take care of this beautiful building.
This is, I think, is good adaptive reuse.
And the, all the stone is going to be kept as it is now. It's still sitting on the right-hand side going down the driveway, the old slate and everything, and stone. That's all going to be used. And when you're done, it's probably going to be cleaned so it looks as pristine as possible, so you don't see the old windows and the new windows. Is that fair?
There are no windows.
Well, I mean, when you alter the shape of this window.
We've repointed everything, so everything's new. All of them are on the upsets, so it'll match.
But you haven't seamed or anything, the exterior stone.
The what?
You haven't cleaned up the stone or anything, right?
No.
Okay.
It's just got wire brush on it, it's all. Nothing anymore.
But it's sitting there without a roof.
Right.
What will the roof be?
Slate. We're going to put the slate on.
So it's going to be the old slate back, feel that back very similar to what it was?
But with skylight.
With skylights, that's where I was wondering. So not, no glass roof, though?
Well, at one point, it was going to be a flat-top pavilion. It would have much less changed to the existing structure than the flat-top roof and keeping this facade, you know? So now they're putting a batch of roof in pretty much the same condition as it was. We're changing this facade slightly and they get a good adaptive reuse.
I know, but the more times you incrementally remove historic resources, the faster you diminish the building itself. So, you know, if you lose an elevation here and then the next time another elevation, you just keep reducing the significance. I would, I would like you, I mean, you offered to continue to look at the.
Eliminate those windows.
I'm not sure I'm at, I'm not sure I'm personally at the point of elimination, but I think I am at the point where I really want to be able to see physically what the, what the opening size was in those windows, because I just feel, well, you were talking about it's being stoned in with something else?
Right, so they, the original.
There are choices, right, to be.
Were two wide. We're proposing to remove one and make it only one wide, same exact.
But you're going to have to fill that opening.
So, you know.
And you have determined what that fill material will be? I can't see. You're going to.
We're going to have to take out stone in there to make it look like it wasn't filled in. So when you look at that side of the wall, right, it's going to be like, you can't even tell.
Well, but Cynthia's point earlier to me, I thought she was going in the direction of, if you want to see the difference, because one of the, one of the approaches to historic preservation is, you're not trying to make it look like something it wasn't. And so you could choose.
Definitely recess the infill slightly. I'm hesitant to recess, I'm hesitant to put the keystone back because that affects the structural integrity.
But could you fill with another material other than the stone, is my question.
Are we talking about redoing it so that we can see where the old windows were?
Yes.
Oh, boy.
The design that they're proposing is very tasteful and beautiful. I don't know why we're telling ourselves to take a building that if they didn't save it last year, may have collapsed. Why is it that critical? That's what I'm trying to understand. Why? What's wrong with the proposed thing that almost mimics the architectural style of the other end of the building, as far as the windows go? And the keystones, again, as far as I'm concerned, that's the most appealing structural, when I see a stone building like that, these old buildings, that's how they were built, even if it was fake, to see that.
Richard, I think we're just pursuing alternative ways to do this, and it's worthwhile looking at these alternatives.
Okay.
The idea is to try to retain the sense of what it was.
I know, of course, we have a window that somebody took out way back, and it's on the, it's on the west side, and it's an infill. And everyone looks at it and says, what happened, why did, what happened with the designer? And they actually took all the glass out.
And that is exactly the case on the east elevation of Mills Mansion, where because there was a bathroom on the interior, one window is cemented in and the other is not. So those sorts of.
Right, so this doesn't look.
It's complicated with the stone edges. I'm hesitant to have it look as if it could collapse visually.
I think we're getting way too deep into this, and it's supposed to be a sketch plan. And half of this is brand-new to most of the board, if that's fair. You guys have obviously met quite a few times. So we're not the Historical Preservation Committee.
May I just ask one additional question? The existing width of the door that's there is what?
Six.
And you are wishing to go how wide?
Ten.
And what about some compromise there?
The boat won't get into the boat.
I can't get it.
What's the beam of the boat?
We have a width and a height, and then plus the trailer.
They show it on, it's got about four inches on each side of the boat coming into there, so.
And I assume then there are wheels outside of the beam of the boat, just to support the trailer?
Well, not necessarily, because the wheels are underneath the curve of the boat itself.
Is it your boat that takes the boat off the trailer when it's in the structure? Or you're going to leave it on the trailer or you're going to set it?
It's going to stay on the trailer.
Melanie, could I ask, in terms of historic preservation, aesthetics don't play into it, or it's just that if it's the historic material and the historic look, it's more important than getting the aesthetics right?
Yes, that's correct.
Same question.
And what, where do we come down as a planning board on that? Do we look at aesthetics or do we look at historic?
I think, I think you look at.
Which takes most weight.
I think you look at both, and that's why we've been having the conversation, and that's why I think the conversation itself is important. that's why I think the conversation itself is important. We will compromise in the end. We're not, you're correct, this building needs to be saved, we're looking for the best way to save it. And so you just ask the questions back and forth about, do we have other choices? You shouldn't just walk away saying it's the only choice, there usually are other choices. There may not be another solution here. But I would be remiss, as someone whose career was as a historic preservationist, not to ask the question. We get the answer, and then we'll all deliberate, and we'll make a decision, and Cynthia will do the best she can, and everybody else will, to come up with the best possible solution.
I think it's also safe to say that from what we first saw, let's say, two years ago, or whatever, what, you know, flat roof, all that sort of stuff, this has come a tremendous way. I mean, basically, the outline of the building now is preserved to what it was originally. The roof line, I mean, a great deal, I think, of improvement in design has happened through the discussions that we've had. There's any question about that, I think what we're seeing before us today is really a very beautiful building.
And I would feel very bad if they came back and said, okay, this facade can be what it is, because now we've adapted it to another reuse, but we're going to go back with a flat roof. You know, to me, that...
Well, we're not going to regress, we're not going to go backwards.
Well, I don't know, we were about to approve the flat roof and the pavilion on top and all that.
Well, I wasn't here at that time.
We'll take that if we want.
I like that one.
Can I just, I just want to add, just want to add one point, and then I'll, then I'll stop. You know, oftentimes, we've heard in this conversation, and I've heard it said, and I know that when people say this, they are not meaning evil things, but things will be said like, well, you won't see it from the river, and you won't see it from the road. That's like saying it's okay to go into a wetland and disturb it in a harmful way, and because nobody goes there, it doesn't matter.
I mean, I don't see, it's the same...
Because it's a resource.
So the historical preservation...
The fact that nobody sees the change doesn't mean that it doesn't impact the resource. Just the fact that you can't see it from the railroad, you can't see it from...
When is the resource accessed?
Pardon?
When is the resource accessed, and by whom?
It's currently being accessed by the owners.
Okay, so if they're the ones accessing the resource...
But they also bear the responsibility for preserving the historic resource that they own, to the best of their ability.
I think that, you know, I probably say this regularly, I think it's important to focus on the details, I think it's important to analyze alternatives and solutions, but I think it's also important to focus on the big picture. And this poor building, you know, needs so much help. In my opinion, it's remarkable that the owners are even willing to restore it.
And they are to be commended for that, and I will go on the record right now as saying, I'm not opposed to this project. And I'm not opposed to the adaptive reuse. I am only looking for the best possible solution. And I think it's, I think it's tweaking here and there, and I appreciate all the tweaking here and there you've done, and I, you know, I'm not opposed to this project. I think it's a great adaptive reuse. I'm just looking to make sure that I feel comfortable with the final, you know, you're talking about recessing, and my brain was playing with, well, if it was recessed, and if it was in a different material, would it look, is it recessed? Can you, I mean, I'm just doing what you do.
And if the boat doesn't work out, is an eight-foot wide door acceptable?
Exactly.
The narrowest commercial, the narrowest garage door you can put in any house is eight feet, nine foot is preferred. I'll tell you from experience, when I built my house, I had two eight-foot doors in there, I drove my pickup truck in it once, and I said, "There you go." We're out to nine feet. And when you have mirrors extended or anything like that, you've got about that much room on either side with the nine-foot doors.
And the discussions you're having, I think, the one thing we all have to recognize that ultimately, from a historic preservation standpoint, ecological, everything, the planning board, we are the final ones who make the determinations. People advise us, the C A B, the W A C, they advise us, but we make the decisions. It's the same with historical issues, we're the ones who really do have to take the hard look and make the decisions ultimately. This project has come a great way, and it's going to be delightful to see this building restored. I think it's great you're getting this boat, I hope, I'd love to see it back in the water, I'd love to see the boathouse restored. I've been out on the dock with the previous owners, watching, waved to the people on the train as they went by. It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful area, it's a great thing, it's a great project, and I, no way, in no way do we want to see this not happen, we want to see it not going. But we do want to make sure that we've taken the hard look, that I think we're responsible to take and to look for it, but to come to a compromise that can work for everybody, that can work for the building, that can work for the owners of the building, that they can do what they, you know, feel they need to do with it. I think we're getting there, I think this discussion tonight has been helpful, I think that you have made the effort to look at how it might be reinforced, how it might work with some of the other options. I, you know, it's decisions that we're going to have to make with you and compromise with you, there's no question about that. But it is ultimately our responsibility, I mean, unlike any other board in the town of Rhinebeck, what we decide actually really means something, because it ends up being built, it ends up being constructed. We can't go back next year and change it, so. But this has been very, very helpful, I, you know, I think you're going to go back, come up with the final application for this, you know, Larissa's going to go over it, and you'll be able to tell us exactly why it really, for any dumb reasons, you truly believe it needs to be this way. I'm glad we've gone as far as we have for this, and that it's, basically, it's going to be that, rather than what was originally proposed. It's definitely very attractive.
So procedure, or are... Mark, as we discuss this afternoon, this is an application for site plan, plus the application for a special use permit, because technically it's within a thousand feet from the river. So those are the, those are the two applications, there's...
But there were two, I thought we talked about...
Yeah, it's a double, it's a double special permit, two components to the special permit, one's for the adaptive reuse of a historic building, and the second is because of the location, vis-à-vis the river. And obviously, anything that requires a special permit is also site planned.
Right.
There's a question I raised in my notes that Larissa's going to have to rule on, whether or not a certificate of demolition or removal is required, in that this does remove an element, be it small, of an historic building. And if that, depending upon her determination, that additional application may be required.
Okay.
We need a demolition permit for the alteration of the north wall?
Removal of an element of a historic building.
Historic structure, yeah.
No, it's a building, right?
No, it's a planning board matter.
So, at what point do you, I mean, if I alter one capstone or one corner piece in a building, do I need a demolition permit?
I think, I think the issue here is going to be whether or not the alteration of...
An opening?
A critical opening, an opening, be it window openings, window openings are not being altered.
So any historic building that has an alteration to a window opening or size needs a special demolition permit? I'm just saying, we're setting precedent there.
No, it's not, it's not a precedent, because it is in the law.
Based on what, do we require a demolition permit, is what I'm saying? And we're saying, based on the renovation of the north wall, we're requiring the applicant to get a demolition permit, and I'm saying, that's kind of really pushing.
It's an exterior modification of a historic building.
Okay. But I think we should, it's important that we document it, so that we follow that same exact rule every time someone comes before us and we do renovations.
Absolutely.
Okay?
So anyway.
So those materials can be...
I think you've got, you've already submitted the application.
Submitted the site plan application and the special permit, but it was only from February 25th.
Yeah, if the, if the board concurs, I think, would be my position, again, subject to authorization by the, by the Z A, as opposed to the Z E L, that the board could consider this item, process this item on February 20th, if not, then the March 5th meeting.
If you come out then, maybe it should be the mark, because Larissa has to make a determination for demolition and all that.
Right.
I mean, I could have the materials in by Monday, but...
Would you be just as comfortable doing it on the 5th as on the 20th of February?
It would be, it would be better.
Does it matter to you guys?
February...
20th is the next meeting.
Yeah.
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
Because Monday's the holiday.
It's shift from the holiday.
Monday's the holiday.
We're on top of that.
I was thinking it's Monday.
Yeah, in terms of being cleaner and having everything on the table, it would be more appropriate that this be an agenda item for, for March 5th. And frankly, in either case, whether it's February 20th or March 5th, your public hearing is going to be at the first April meeting, because there's only one March meeting.
And that maybe gives the team some time to, you know, to relax a little bit, and for...
Thank you.
And then you can be on for the fireworks on the 5th?
Oh.
Oh.
Then, yeah.
Yeah. Thanks a lot, right?
You'll be before that, though.
But I, personally, I do want to say, I think you've done a very, you've done a beautiful job with the building, and, you know, from where I first was and where I last saw it, I'll say, this is a vast improvement.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you, guys. That's all I got, guys. Anybody else have anything they wanted to, can we go home for dinner now?
Are we going to talk about the, the change of the law?
You're going to get them, if the town board does take them up and decides to pursue them.
Okay, so they don't have it?
They do, it's been given to them, but they now have to go by resolution to accept them for review, for public review, for public hearing, secret, and all that. And if they do that, they have to give it to us for 60 days to look at.
Right, okay, thank you. Because there's a lot of new stuff in there.
Yes, there is, and so we will have 60 days to look at. Ready?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all.